Elliot, can you hear us? Elliot, can you hear us?
Go ahead and start so that we can have our officers out as soon as they need to.
Can you send him, can you send him a chat? Does chat work? Can you send him a message?
He can't hear.
Should I call?
I would call the meeting to order and then we'll get him online.
I call the Patent Township.
Captain O'Leary. Captain O'Leary. N. Oh. No.
Who's that? Go ahead.
That's Elliot. Okay. I call the Patent Township Supervisors Meeting at October 25th, 23 at 5:35 to order. Announcements. Announcements. Welcome all, especially new Patent Township residents, to the Patent Township Community, a place for all. I would like to take a moment and thank you all for your condolences to my family, for the death of my family, not only to this board, staff, and the residents, that their kindness was well received, and our gratitude for my family. Okay, and as you're able, can you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Were we able to fix it?
We're still working. Oh, he has sound now.
Yeah, that's what he says.
Okay, so if we unmute him, he should be able to take over.
Elliot, can you unmute yourself? Okay.
Hello?
Hello. We hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Proceed.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Elliot, we're at public comments.
Can you hear us, Elliot?
Announcements.
Using the same settings I had for the COG meeting the other night.
He's having issues.
But I don't hear anything.
So Pam, why don't you continue on?
I'm gonna come over there and I'll.
Okay.
No problem.
Can you jump back to announcements?
Yes. We're going back to announcements. Are there any additional items to be considered for this agenda?
Oh, well, I can announce it. Okay, I just have a note that the Hindu festival of dosara, which is also known as a word that I actually didn't look up and learn how to pronounce.
It's a dosami.
Okay, thanks, Dan. So dosara is how it's commonly known. It was celebrated yesterday, October 24th. There's more information at the link on our agenda, but I would just like to expand on that, that it is a celebration of good overcoming evil. Very festive celebration. And that's it.
That's it.
Okay, Susan's down here.
Yeah, they're having issues.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comments.
No additions to the posted agenda.
Okay, additions to the posted agenda. Are there any additional items to be considered for the agenda? Seeing none, moving on is public comments. Residents and taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest to the township. Comments related to a specific agenda item should be deferred until that point of the meeting. If you are attending by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature in the Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate that it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Are there any public comments at this time? Okay, seeing none. Next on the agenda is the presentation and public hearing. And Chief Jolly, would you like to present?
Thank you very much. We're actually gonna kind of do this backwards. We're gonna start off with introducing our newest hire, our newest police officer to the board, so Tyler, if you want to come on up here. It's my pleasure to introduce Tyler Brauski. He was hired by the Patent Township Police Department on October 10th of 2023, so just a couple weeks ago. Tyler was born and raised in State College, Pennsylvania, graduated from state high. I'm not gonna talk about what year it was, but he was very active in the Boy Scouts, though, and earned the honor of his Eagle Scout. He also served in the U.S. Army National Guard for six years, and he was honorably discharged. I knew Pam would like that. He also comes to us with some law enforcement experience. He previously has worked for five years at the Clearfield Regional Police Department. So right now Tyler is in our field training program. Actually, he's FTO right now, Brian Schaefer. So he's kind of learning our policies, our procedures, and how we operate as a department. But again, my pleasure to introduce Tyler to the board supervisor.
Welcome.
And then I might as well just go ahead and roll right into my next one. Okay, very good. So it's always, it's always my pleasure, it's always my, my honor to be here and speak to the Patent Township Board of Supervisors about our police officers. We have a fantastic police department. The men and women of Patent Township Police Department do a fantastic job every day, and we try to recognize them as much as possible. But especially when somebody goes above and beyond the call of duty. And I have that honor tonight to, to talk about Officer Jeff McElrath. So Mac, if you could stand up here, please, with me? So Officer McElrath, first of all, just a little bit of background. He has been with us since 1996. So he joined Patent Township Police Department in 1996. Has 27 years of service to the community here. Before that, he was a police officer in Berwick for?
Five years.
Five years, okay. So obviously, a very veteran, seasoned officer. But I have the pleasure tonight to talk about an award that Officer McElrath recently received about a week ago. He was nominated for, and then selected to receive, the 2023 Crisis Intervention Team Officer of the Award. That award was presented to him last Tuesday at a public safety meeting that we have here in our community with police, fire, and EMS leaders. But the incident that Officer McElrath was nominated for happened in April of this year is when he responded to a residence in Patent Township for a report of a 14-year-old male who was attempting to hang himself. Officer McElrath arrived at the scene and quickly ascertained that the youth was inside a locked garage, standing on a stool with a belt around his neck that was attached to a garage door rail. Officer McElrath attempted to engage in dialogue with the youth, but he was too distraught to communicate. Officer McElrath deployed a plan, or I'm sorry, developed a plan to kick in the door to the garage, pick up the youth, while Officer Sunderland, who had just arrived on the scene, removed the belt from his neck. The officers immediately executed the plan and removed the youth from danger. Officer McElrath then took the time to speak with the male, reinforcing his words that he cared about the male and his life. Officer McElrath then transported him to the Mountain Inn Medical Center for to be treated for the abrasions on his neck and also for a mental health evaluation. So that was the incident that he was nominated for. And beyond the heroic actions of him, very quickly, you know, and officers make split-second decisions on a daily basis, but very quickly coming up with that plan, and again, the heroic action of breaking into that garage and getting this young man down to safety and out of danger, was the empathy and the compassion that he showed to this young man. I watched the body worn camera footage and listened to the conversation that he had with him. And he took a lot of time and spoke to this young man for about 30 minutes about how, you know, his life did matter. His life did, was of a lot of importance to Officer McElrath and to our agency. And then went again above and beyond and gave him a ride to the hospital. A lot of times, we would call for an ambulance, they would come, and that would be the end of our interaction. But because he developed that rapport with this young man, he went that extra step to see him through and to make sure that he got to the treatment that he needed. So that's kind of more what I'm impressed about. What we expect from our officers, what we would expect from an officer who has 32 years of police experience. However, a very distinguished honor, a well-deserved honor. He was awarded a commendation from the CIT, the Crisis Intervention Team, which I stole from him and held on to, so I'm gonna give it back to him today. But just to read what it says, "For consistently demonstrating genuine empathy and understanding when interacting with individuals in crisis, your calm and kind demeanor when handling crisis and volatile situations safely and compassionately means a lot to individuals in crisis as well as their families. You have constantly gone above and beyond the call of duty when handling crisis situations, representing Center County CIT, and serving the Center County community." I'd go beyond that and say, and also representing the Patent Township Police Department and the Patent Township Community. So congratulations to Officer Jeff McElrath for the 2023.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for always supporting us. Supervisors have always been great here. So appreciate it.
Chief, would you give us a minute to, as the board, to say our, our thank you? I know Elliot's having problems, but from this board, we would like to say thank you beyond words. You represent us as well as representing our community. As you heard me say, "Woo-ha." I'm military. We also talk about heroes. Well, not always it is military heroes. Our heroes come in all shapes and sizes. And to this board, our hero is you. And to the officers that put their life on the line and represent us in times of crisis. You saved a life. That can't, there are no words to express the appreciation of life. So.
I've always been honored to be a Patent Township officer, and I'm glad that I can represent the Department of law. And once again, I mean, from administration to the supervisors, you guys have always been first class with us as a department. We appreciate you.
Well, we're stepping up one step further. If it's okay with the board, I know the award came from county. Well, it's time that the board, we would like to put together a commendation from Patent Township. So it will get with our township manager, and we will award you a commendation to say thank you from this board and your community. Thank you.
There is some bad news to this story. Officer McElrath is retiring in July. So he, but again, he has 27 years of dedicated service, but yeah, his retirement date is June, July of 2024.
So you would pick my, my month, my birthday month to leave out of here.
Listen, I told the chief I might still have a little bit more in the day.
Well, thank you. We still have time. All right. So any other board members would like to say?
Oh, you said it very well. We thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for having me down. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mac.
I'm writing off in the sunset very soon, but better perhaps.
She must be very proud.
And we thank you. Not all the time. The spouses get the appreciation as well. So we say thank you to you as well.
See you, Mary.
All right. Next on the agenda is the 2024 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. And Larry, I think that's you?
That is me. Let me see if I can get this to work.
And this is our financial director, who is going to present the Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay, so we're gonna discuss tonight the Capital Improvement Plan for 2024, 2028. I want to preface this presentation with the fact that I did this prior to COGS final budget meeting. Okay, so some of these numbers are obviously gonna change based on what we've learned with the COG budget, which we haven't seen yet. I was told it was gonna be done on Friday, then Monday, then Tuesday, then today, that I still haven't seen it. So it may be tomorrow, it may be next week. So I'm sure we'll discuss that in more detail later, but just to keep that in mind in, in doing this. Okay, the CIP is a tool that assists us in planning for the future projects. It's a forum for proposing major capital projects and significant operational increases such as staff increases for several years in advance, five years, obviously. It's a means for establishing a process for evaluating each project's justifications and benefits. It also helps us prioritize and face of limited funding, and it looks at alternative funding sources such as grants, loans, pay-as-you-go. The manager, our esteemed manager, Amy, her recommendation consisted of two parts, the capital projects and significant increases to operational expenditures for 2024 to 2028, and a forecast of the real estate tax rates to support the CIP. Our ongoing projects, and we have plenty of them, the BikeWay Right-Away Acquisition, the Atherton Street Signal Improvements, Atherton and Woodycrest Intersection Improvements, Office Door Lock Upgrades, Top Trees Resort Rack P Grant Sponsorship, a new Tide Ship Office Side, Colonnade Green Light Go Grant for Pedestrian Upgrades, Wado Viro Arley Grant for pedestrian and signal upgrades, Hamer Foundation Grant for Open Space, and?
It's a lot.
MS4 Stormwater Projects, the sidewalk from Carnegie to Sheets, Kirkwood Drive Pedestrian Access, the Scotia Road Shared Use Path Connector, firearms replacement for the, for the Police Department, the body worn camera and mobile video recording equipment for the Police Department, our K-9 Patrol, the Police Records Management System, a new office roof, and spongy moss spray. And I think that's all the ongoing projects, the new projects. We're looking to replace the chairs in this room and upstairs at the library. They've been around for, I think, since the dinosaur's run, then it's probably time that we replace those. And inside the CIP, we have $10,000 per year in 2024 and 2025 to be paid for under the general fund. We have not engaged in a compensation study since 2005. We're overdue. We need, we need to set one up. So we have $15,000 in 2024 in the CIP for the compensation study also to come out of general fund. The Top Trees Avenue Shared Use Path, $48,930 in 2024. This is to engage a consultant to complete the preliminary design for work on a shared reuse path from Top Trees Avenue, or the Top Trees Resort to Kirkwood Drive. Split Rail Fencing Upgrades and Replacements, $40,000 in 2024, and $34,000 in 2025. This is to replace split rail fencing in Ford Parks. Gaynor Drive Parklet, Patton Woods Natural Recreation Area, were started this year. Circleville Park would be in 2024, and Amble Side Park would be in 2025. Graves Woods Park Phase 2, $45,000 in 2024 for design work, and $300,000 in, $45,000 in 2024 and 2025 for design work, and $300,000 in 2026 for construction, the beginning of construction. Central Booking Center, $275,000 from 2024 to 2028. It increases each year. We're, Patent Township is responsible for approximately 20% of local share cost of the Central Booking Center at the Center County Prison. It used to be funded, in all the past years, it was funded by fees that were assessed by the courts, but since the pandemic, the courts have been waiving those fees. So the Central Booking Center is now experiencing deficits, and we're gonna have to pony up since, since the magistrates and the courts are ponying up for us.
Just for clarification, the $275,000, that's our 20% share?
That's our 20% share, but that's $275,000 for over five years.
Over five years?
Yes. Okay. The Police Records Management System is $200,000 in 2024. That is for 12 and a half percent of the total cost of the new records management system. As you know, Tyler's talked about it many times, that the, the record system that we have doesn't fit our needs, and we have to go out and buy a new one. Hopefully, 2024, we'll, we'll be able to start with that.
Another question. So this $200,000 is for the, the capital cost of installing a new system. I assume there'll be an annual license fee as well, but not this amount, obviously.
Not, not that amount, but it's, it's a smaller amount, but I can't remember if we even know what it is yet.
We won't know until we select the system, for sure. Right now, we're paying about $12,000 a year. So.
It locked up on me. Here we go. Okay, projected real estate tax rates. And this is where I want to again bring up that, that I don't have the COG in there. So take this as, as preliminary, okay? When we talk about the budget, this is subject to change, okay? Based on what I learned in the, in the COG budget meetings. So in this CIP, I do not have any tax increases for '24. However, I have 2 tenths of a mil in 2025, and 1 tenth of a mil in 2026 through 2028. Using those rates, projected year-end cash is right around our 8 to 12%, with the exception of 2028. That's so far out in the future. I'm sure that will change from that 0.9%. But it looks like 9.7% in 2023, 8% in 2024, and then it starts to come down.
What is your preferred percentage?
Eight to 12.
Eight to 12, okay.
Okay, and I will take any questions that anybody might have.
Sorry, those last figures, was that with the tax increases?
That's with those tax increases that I showed in 2024 through 2028.
I have a comment. I was gonna wait till the, the end of the meeting when we review committee reports, but because we're talking about possible tax increases, I think it's appropriate now, those of you that participated in the general forum meeting, heard me make my comments. We don't have the final summary budget yet to review. We will have it before our, the first, our first meeting in November, because on our agenda for that meeting, we'll be talking about it.
Yeah, we're gonna make some, propose that you make some adjustments to your budget meeting schedule, just to accommodate the fact that we don't have the numbers from the COG yet, and that backs us up in finishing our budget.
But the bottom line is, since I was your representative on the finance committee, and we had all these multiple hearings, and then the final wrap-up session last Thursday, the bottom line is that what the COG is putting forward to, for us the bottom line is that what the COG is putting forward to, for us as a municipal board to review, is an increase of around 10.86% municipal contributions in 2024 over municipal contributions that we're currently submitting this year, 2023, a 10.86% increase. That still, we don't have the final figures yet, but that was our
That was our estimate. That was our guesstimate, with the information that we had.
They gave us their best guess on Monday.
Yes.
Which they still haven't finalized yet. Anyway, we, I will say, the initial budget, detailed budget request came in at 15.11%, I think, 15, over 15%.
It was really close to 16. I think it was 10.86 or something like that.
Increase over last year, municipal contribution. I'm not talking about our contribution, that's based on a formula, but we cut that way back. But the best we could do was 10.86% plus or minus over last year. Now, there are very good reasons, there were several big-ticket items that we were all in favor of. The hiring for firefighters who will be working jointly between fire department and codes. So we all approved that. We agreed it's necessary, it's time, this is appropriate time that we start hiring professional firefighters. We've been running on a volunteer basis forever, but volunteer recruitment has fallen and fallen and fallen, every year fallen. A lot of people are retiring, volunteers are retiring. It's, we can't, cannot start hiring firefighters. And our taxpayers demand good fire service with very short delays in response. And that's important that we have firefighters in the fire stations who can respond and leave the station within two or three minutes after the call comes in. So we agreed to that. We also agreed to the results of the classification and compensation study of the COG employees, which indicated that there were a significant number, over 50, I don't remember the exact number, but over 50 COG employees whose salaries were below market. And we agreed that we should raise those salaries up to the market. The implementation we came up with is, instead of doing it all in one year, we agreed we would split it in two, in two years. So 50% of what they're, what they're going to, the increase they're going to get in 2024, the remaining 50% in 2025. So at least we spread it out. But that's a significant number that causes the increase in municipal contributions over the last year. The other significant number was the Center County Metropolitan Planning Organization request. What is the MPO? Elly knows very well, he's been on that committee. They do countywide transportation planning.
Region-wide. Region-wide.
Region-wide.
Region-wide.
Region-wide, and therefore, they solicit grant money from federal and state sources to pay the majority of the expenses of, you know, regional transportation improvements. And the example right now that's going on is the I-99, I-80 interchange project, which I think Phase One was already completed, they're in Phase Two now. Ah, we're talking about, you know, what is it, $100 million or something like that? Huge amount of money. The reason why that's important now is President Biden and Congress's passage of this huge infrastructure improvement plan, that states are going to get millions of, multi-millions of dollars that they can disperse into transportation projects inside their states. So the MPO needed additional staff member to coordinate all the solicitation of those grants, plus they needed, they're going to need to hire consultants who could do all the detailed work that was necessary. We cut back their request. They were requesting $200,000 for consultants and a 12-month salary for a new staff person, transportation planner. We cut it back to $100,000 for consultants and a nine-month salary for a new employee, a grants manager, because we knew they wouldn't be able to hire somebody on January 1, so fine, probably they'll hire somebody by April. So we said, okay, you can have nine-month salary. So that was also a huge increase. Plus, Parks and Rec did ask for some new staff. We did not approve one of them, but we did approve two other, three others, one of which was just a seasonal employee at $18,000. Sorry for my long description, but the bottom line is, once we get the final number, and then Larry plugs it in to the township budget requirements, and looks at what our, well, we're projecting the end-of-year balance of, you know, the money we have left over, remaining 9.7%, and see how much of that we can utilize to offset this huge increase in the cost of our share for COG in 2024. My prediction, and I haven't checked this with Larry, but my prediction is that we're going to end up needing to implement a real estate tax increase for 2024 in order to meet these costs. I'm just speaking out of turn, because Larry has not had the opportunity to plug in the numbers yet, he doesn't have the COG number final that he needs to plug in and finish our budget requirements. But we have not raised taxes in nine years in real estate, and I think that that is going to be ending.
Yes, I would agree with everything you said, Dan, that once, based on what was in that budget meeting, that final budget meeting, and what I saw there, you know, I feel that, yes, we're probably not going to be able to hold, remember the numbers that we keep is 8 to 12% because we have to have enough funds to hold us over till March, when we start getting real estate tax incoming. So we actually received most of our funds in March and April, and then we spent 10 months spending it to get back to March again. So that's why it's 8 to 12, because 8 to 12% covers us for three to four months. Okay, so, you know, with, even with these numbers, that 9.7 being so close, a small, the increases that I saw, which I don't think are small coming out of the COG, because we're talking about, you know, almost 11% on, you know, a million eight, which was what we spent with the COG last year. You know, that's a substantial amount of money. When we see that increase go up, I agree with you, have not discussed it with you, but that, my feeling is, yeah, I think I run of, we've had a really good run, we've worked really hard, I've worked extremely hard in my eight years here to keep from raising taxes, to keep money in the Patent Tax residents' pockets, just like I like to keep it in my pocket at home. But we also want to continue to fund the police, and fund the public works, and fund the parks, so, and fund COG. So we'll have to, once I finish those numbers, then obviously, when I come to you with the budget, I'll make a recommendation of what kind of an increase we might have to have.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments on the CIP?
I'll say, just like taxes, like, what I'll keep saying like today, I applaud the work that it seems like you have done in concert with the rest of the staff to not raise taxes, especially in an environment where I think it's dominated by, you know, individuals saying, you know, wasteful government spending, and we don't want to raise taxes, and taking my money, as well as understanding the plight that a lot of people are faced with, given the economic, sort of like dire situation that a lot of people are experiencing. And so for me, it's, I've never really, as a recent homeowner, I've never really understood taxes, real estate taxes, until I had to cut those checks. And, but regardless, I'm not really sure of like the messaging, if any messaging, that, you know, goes out to educate residents on the necessity of raising taxes. But I just think it's important if we, you know, when we move forward with that, to be pretty transparent in why we're doing this, and it's great to hear that, again, this is not wasteful spending, it's that we're really funding the things that are necessary for, you know, our government to function, but also, this is what our residents are requesting, right? And so I think just having clarity around that, so that residents are aware of the rationale. And I'm not sure if there's ways to buffer the impact of those tax increases. And so if there's, again, local programs, grants, people can apply for, I don't know, but just like with whatever the messaging is for why we're raising the taxes, understanding too, in that messaging, that it's going to potentially have an impact on people's, you know, pockets, especially in this economy. And so if there's other support mechanisms that residents aren't aware of, food banks, other sort of like things, I think that may be helpful to provide that messaging to.
So there are, there is a statewide property tax rebate that, for fixed income, low-income families, they can apply for. There's also a local tax rebate, property tax rebate, that follows the same program as the state does. And hopefully, there's a lot of discussion with the state that the income levels have not increased in forever. So Governor Shapiro was looking at those income levels and looking to increase those, so hopefully, they will go through.
He might have done it.
Do you think he did it?
I think recently he just did it.
I think it's, as a person who has helped out many of my elderly or senior, should I say, senior friends and family members on fixed income, fill out these forms, it's badly needed that, so I'm glad that he's done that. So what we will do when we come to you with the budget presentation is we'll make sure that we're very transparent on what's happening, on what services are costing us, and how they've increased year over year, and how they've, you know, some of the services, obviously, the wages for public works and the wages for the police department are in excess of what the organic growth of the real estate taxes, which is 35 to 40% of our total revenue is our real estate taxes. It's the only income tax rate that we're able to adjust, because we are maxed out at earned income tax at our half a percent, we are maxed out on our LST at $52. So the only one that we have any control over is the real estate taxes. But we will go over all of that again, and Amy and I are working on not my normal annual presentation, but something a little bit more robust, so I think that will help with the transparency.
Yeah, and we also want to just mention two things. Number one, the state right now, the Pennsylvania Economy League, has been working with the municipal league to try to push the state to change what are called the Act 511 taxes, which are the earned income taxes, the local services tax, because it's hitting everybody, all the municipalities across the board, and that law hasn't been adjusted since 1965. So essentially, our municipalities are using laws from 1965 to pay for goods and services in 2023. So that's something that's kind of coming, and I'll just touch on this briefly, because Larry mentioned it. When we present the budget to you this time, we're actually going to have each of the department heads go through their budgets with you, so that you have a good sense of, we want residents to know what's in a $16 million budget, and you all to be comfortable with what's presented in that $16 million budget. So like Larry said, we're going to change things up a little bit this year, just again, to be a little more robust and transparent with what we're doing.
Thank you. And that rebate program, quickly, is that the one that was like the homestead?
No, it's separate.
No, it's separate. It's, the state of Pennsylvania's form is the REV 1000. If you go on to pa.gov and search rent or property tax rebate, it will pop up with all the information. The local one, I'm not sure.
Through the school district.
It's through the school district. But we, a lot of times during tax season, because everybody fills them out while they're filling out their income taxes, we have the form here in our tax office, even though we don't do it. Normally, the Pennsylvania rebate form is due on June 30th every year, based on the prior year information. This year, it's been extended to December 31st, so you could still file based on 2022's real estate taxes and income until the end of 2023.
After all of that and my discourse, I didn't really look at the CIP in detail, but
That hurts.
I will. You know me.
Oh, I know you will.
I'll let you know.
I know you will.
But just in general, again, look to see if there, like you've done every year, if there are any of these projects that can be shifted a little later, a little later, or fund less.
Certainly, if we have to do that for the budget, we will be pushing out those projects.
You know, they don't look in that bad shape to me, so maybe we can postpone. That's not very much money, but still, it's a philosophy, and let's see what we can postpone.
We were actually talking about that a mere, what, two hours ago?
Yes.
I was saying that to Amy.
Yep.
You know, we might have to push some things out, or slow walk some things.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Share the cars, get rid of the tears. I'm not going to be shared for the rest of the meeting, because I apologize, but basically, what you're saying is that the news is very taxable.
Yes.
As long as we explain everything to people, they won't be withholding the funds with us.
That's exactly right. It's been very taxing on me, that's for sure.
Yes.
Good one.
Betty?
Yeah, so I did read it in detail, which, yeah, which is actually unusual. I mean, I feel, sometimes I feel like a demon, and I know, but I said a lot of, probably little questions. Actually, the first one is, and I talked to Amy about this just the other day, the sign for county township, there was a misunderstanding, when I was envisioning the sign, I was envisioning something out on our, value this, something that would give public announcement to Something that would give public announcement to what we are and where we are. So right now, there's, there's no there there. You have to know that Patent Township office is here to begin with.
So you're not talking about the sign here at the corner of the property?
Right, and in reading through that, I realized it was the words replace. And the front door sign, hmm, that's not the one out on the street. So I think there was, I was envisioning something else when I posted.
There's fifteen thousand dollars worth of sale right there.
Helping us out.
What I would like to do is still keep it in the CIP, but push it out. So until we have the money, put something out.
On the road.
On the road, the main road, yeah. So that's fifteen thousand right there. And I had a question about the sidewalk from Carnegie to Sheets, the Valley Vista. I know that Pam had brought that up. But then it's in the detail, the description said, we're not doing that so much. We just kept the same name, but we're really looking at the path.
Galen.
Galen, yeah.
Down to Sheets.
Yeah, I, I thought about that when I was reading it.
Probably could change the name of that, yep.
Yeah, we need to change the name of that.
Yep.
It's Galen to Sheets.
Okay, so would that drop the cost? Because I thought the ninety thousand dollars was originally for the sidewalk. Maybe not?
Uh, we will double check.
Okay.
I thought we actually changed it to Galen last year.
We did.
And I thought we.
We talked about it.
And, and I, no, I think we, we actually changed the description, not the name of it.
Yeah, we did.
But we did change the description.
Yeah, and I thought we updated the, the, the numbers then, but I'll go back in my files and check.
Okay, so it's just a naming thing. That, that threw me off, and then I, when I read the description, I was reassured that's what it was.
Yeah, I read the description too, and then I didn't even think when I did the PowerPoint that I should not say Carnegie.
No, it's fine.
But I'm from Pittsburgh and I have a soft spot for my, in my heart for Carnegie, so.
Me too. I thought it was, but you didn't. The, let's see, so the, the spongy moth spraying.
Yes.
That is, oh my gosh, that's just.
So I'm going to sit back on this one.
Yeah, and we're going to talk about the rudimentary elements of the spongy moth program in a little bit.
Okay.
But one of the things we are looking into is doing a regional spray next year to save us some money because there's an economy of scale there.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I figured. And then I had a question about it when I get to the, um, the more detailed discussion. So just, let's see, oh, I really applaud you for putting in the facility plan and putting in now, especially after our discussion Monday night of Cog for the last several weeks over, you know, having the opportunity but not having a plan in place to pursue that opportunity. So that's really great. And, um, okay, the MS four, was that in?
That's in the CIP, yep.
Okay, I, I just was curious why we had to reduce our sediment load by ten percent? Is that an overarching?
It's a state requirement. We had to do a pollution reduction plan, and we're part of the MS four program in the area. And the problem that Patent Township has is that two-thirds of our township is in the Big Hollow area. But the Big Hollow area is not in our MS four plan because they don't want to take, there's some explanation as to why this makes sense. It does not make sense to me, however, because only one-third of our township is eligible for the MS four program, and we have to draw these credits and reductions, load from there. And it makes it difficult because most of our basins and things sit in Big Hollow. So we've been talking with Michelle, our new engineer, about, we're still going to pursue this project. It's going to be expensive. We have to get some permits and things through the state. But we're also going to go back to the state and say, can't you let us go back and start retrofitting stormwater basins in the Big Hollow interceptor? Because we have, like, our township is too big in the Big Hollow to not be. And I know we don't want the load counted from Big Hollow, but there has to be a happy medium that we can kind of strike somewhere with the state. The other option is we go and buy credits. And I'm really kind of opposed to buying into projects in college township or at Penn State because that doesn't benefit the residents of Patent Township. And I just sort of have a philosophical issue with that in my head.
So the ten percent reduction was one of sort of a laundry list of options that we could have to do to reduce?
The ten percent we have to do, and the only project identified in the pollution reduction plan that was done regionally for everybody was the Meeks Lane project.
Okay, great, thanks, that makes a lot of sense there. And, oh, just in general, our other townships, our neighboring brother and sister townships going to be experiencing the same situation? Okay.
Yes.
I mean, I figure.
It's my understanding that almost all of them are considering tax increases.
Yeah, the conversation the managers have had a few times now is that almost all of us will be doing a tax increase. And a lot, a lot have indicated, I know the Borough has indicated, it's directly a result of the stressors from the cog budget.
Yeah, okay, okay. And, and then one final question, has to do with the communications position?
Yes. Oh, the communications position.
Yeah, what's going on with that?
Okay, so you might have heard, or might not have heard, but Sophie's husband worked, and I use it in past tense, in the Penn State Athletic Office. He got offered a position at Old Miss down in Oxford, Mississippi, in their athletic department. It was a better position. You know, it was a good move for her husband. Sophie was upset and came to me. And with discussion with Amy, we have opted to give Sophie a, a six-month trial of working remotely from Mississippi. So she is down in Mississippi. She's been down there since the beginning of September. I meet with her via Zoom every Monday. She meets with us in a communications meeting every two weeks. She's continuing to respond to everybody's, everybody's requests as quickly as she has when she was up here. I haven't heard any complaints, I haven't had any complaints. She gets up and works because they're an hour behind us. She, she works from, from seven o'clock to three-thirty, so she's on the same time as we are here. And everything's been, been working good. I did want to, I did want to mention that, and I kept forgetting to in this meeting, that that was a, a decision that Amy and I decided we, we would give her the six months. And I will review with her after probably the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. But, and, and right now, she's, I think she, she's very reactive. If any of you need to email her, if you need to call her, you can still call her here at the office. Her extension rings at her, on her cell phone down in Mississippi. So it's, it's everything. And, and in addition to all that, we had Casey pick up a little bit of this stuff because Sophie wasn't going to be here. Sophie is coming back once a quarter to spend, you know, some days in the office so that we get to see her. So she will be back in the middle of November for a few days and, you know, before Thanksgiving. And so far, so good. I, I haven't heard, like I said, I continue to ask the staff to let me know how things are going. But if you email her, she emails you right back.
So you meant reactive in a good way?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's, she's awesome.
Yeah.
She is, and I've noticed her postings on Nextdoor.
Yes, she continues to do all that. And I just thought that she was too good of, of resource for us to lose.
So my question actually concerns the budgeting for that.
Okay.
So I'm looking at just the proposed projects, and I guess it's on page ten. And so she's, I'm seeing that there's money allocated for twenty-three, whatever.
Yeah, then it goes into.
And it goes to zeros.
Then it goes into operational costs on the other, on the other line.
Okay, okay, so you know what, I didn't make that connection.
So it was, it went up in twenty-three because we took her from part-time to full-time in twenty-three.
Okay.
And then, and then she would be in the normal numbers that I carry forward in operational cost. It's not a change in operations from twenty-three to twenty-four. It's just a continuing operation.
Great, I'm, I was, I'm delighted to hear that. She is good, and I think we have really benefited from having her communicate.
Yes, I think she is, she is very good. And I, and, and I was just as, as upset as she was when, when she came to me and said she needed to talk to me. I said, please tell me you're pregnant, please tell me you're pregnant. And then she said, no, she wasn't, that she was, you know, her husband was moving to Mississippi. And I was, then I hung my head and, and walked over into Amy's office and shut the door, and Amy said, oh, no, what's wrong? And then we, and then, and then we worked it out. So it's been working out good. I just have, I actually had the meeting with her today because she wasn't feeling well on Monday. And this afternoon, her and I met, and we talked about the, the dog and starting the dog's Instagram and, and once we get all that information.
Yeah, she's got good postings too.
Yes, she's very good, which she does. She's got her finger on the pulse of the gen, whatever they are, disease.
Yeah, whatever, the younger folk.
Yeah.
Okay, thank, that's it for now, thank you so much.
So Tom, did you have something?
Yeah, this, this probably isn't any of my business, but I'm just curious about, yeah, flexibility in hybrid work for other staff.
So we do try to be flexible. We have a staff member right now who, her mother is having some health issues. So she's been actually flexing her time right now and doing some hybrid work because she's got to be with her mother. So we try to be flexible when we can with folks because we understand that situations come up, and they're a valued member of the Patent Township team, so we want to know that, we want them to know that we have their back.
Yeah, and I, and even prior to the pandemic, I was, I was flexible with, with working from, you know, I would work from home if, like, my wife was out on one of her surgeries that was pre-pandemic, I worked from home and logged in to the network from home and work. So I, I think that's a, a good resource for our employees. And we try to, we try to be, to help them out in any way we can. I feel that if you help them, they'll turn around and help you when, when you need it.
Absolutely. Amazing job in the CIP. I just, every time I get into it, I'm amazed at how, not, not just how complex and detailed it is, but how everything is looked at from a different aspect. You group things differently, so it, it makes a lot of sense for a number, number of aspects.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice job.
I did have one, yeah, one point about the road resurfacing and reconstruction. Uh, I'm looking at the annual sort of like figures for that, and I'm curious. I understand those materials that are like longer lasting, durable, or like more expensive sometimes, and unintended consequence, it like takes away work from, from people in an annual way. But I'm wondering, have we ever considered materials and stuff like that that lasts longer?
We're going to have some of that conversation under the Fall Road Report. Ken, Ken is going to give you some information about some things that we're going to try next year.
Sweet. All right.
So, so just hold that thought.
Yes, it's coming attraction.
It's coming attraction.
Larry, I have a question on.
Yes.
It says office roof.
Yes.
Was that here or was that the fire?
It's here.
For here.
It's here, yeah. The office, the, the roof for the fire station will be done by the fire department.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're looking at applying, the state has gambling money statewide that's available, the local share account is what it's called, and it's for municipal projects. I have some colleagues in the Pittsburgh area that have gotten a ton of money from it. So we're going to look to apply for some gambling money for a roof. So thank you to the people that gamble in Pennsylvania if we get the money.
I think Amy took care of all of that money when she was down at Bethlehem.
I think someone else did too, but I won't name names.
Thank you.
Oh, no, sorry, I just have to hold my hand.
Oh, I know.
No, I'm sorry.
Bye.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
No, okay. All right, moving on. So Amy and Larry, you have your, that's okay, moving on.
Public safety.
Public safety. Next on the agenda, Chief, you're up.
All right, yep, back to me. So again, in a very busy month of September for the police department, you'll note that we had two-hundred-and-thirty-three traffic stops, wrote thirty-two citations, one parking ticket, and handled fifty-three criminal arrests. Our bike patrol did seventeen and a half miles, thirty-three business checks, and handled one incident. Under department notes, a twenty-two, twenty-two-year-old male was arrested for identity theft, access device fraud, and attempted theft by deception. That male presented a fake ID and attempted to purchase three thousand five hundred dollars worth of merchandise on a business account at one of our stores in the township. Two twenty-year-old males were arrested for underage drinking and fleeing law enforcement on foot. Both males were on a spin bike, and you heard that correctly, both were on a spin bike. One was riding on the handlebars, traveling up North Atherton Street. There was some, some obvious issues with that, amongst the, the fact that they couldn't keep the bike in the, on the side of the road, they were all over the place. So an officer did stop them. As he was gathering information from these two young men, they decided to run. There was a short foot pursuit, and one of the males was taken into custody by the officer who stopped them. The other was later identified and arrested as well. And a thirty-five-year-old male was arrested for simple assault and false imprisonment charges. And those, that arrested them from a domestic dispute between a male and his, his girlfriend. Six arrests were made for retail theft, thirty-four for minors law. I think that we're going to finally see that trend down a little bit. We're not quite seeing the volume in October. So we're kind of hoping that we've hit our peak and we're kind of coming down on the other end of this now. So I'll let you know next month, though. And then eight individuals were arrested for driving under the influence. Our officers served five warrants of the eleven that they attempted, and we conducted twenty-two vacation home checks. We did use force during two months, two incidents in the month of September. The first was when there was a male who was standing along a very busy township roadway that's kind of narrow. The officers were concerned that he was trying to possibly harm himself and was going to enter traffic. So they spoke with him for about thirty minutes, and at that point, they decided they were going to try to escort him into the patrol car to get him away from that situation. He resisted, and the officers had to use force to overcome his resistance to secure the individual. EMS was summoned, and the male was transported to the hospital for further treatment. But there were no injuries reported by anybody on scene. And the second incident takes us back to the spin bike incident, where again, there was a short foot pursuit. While the one individual was running away from the officer, he did trip and fall onto the ground. The officer did then go to the ground with him and handcuff him without any further incident, though, and there were no injuries reported from that as well. Under community relations, Officer Tuskovich participated in the Park Forest Baptist Community, Church Community Festival. He presented to the Citizens Police Academy about the tactical response team. And then he also spoke to sixth-grade students at Park Forest Middle School about social media usage and safety, a hot topic, obviously, in the middle school ages. Sergeant Albright provided a police presence and traffic control for a five-k run block that was out at Surferville Park. It seemed like it was a very successful event, and that was the same exact morning that Officer Tuskovich, Officer Bardell, Officer Schaefer, and I participated in our twenty-first annual children's safety fair. The event was a huge, huge. The event was a huge, huge success, was very well attended, we had fantastic weather. But kudos really go out to Officer Tuskovich, who does the lion's share of the work organizing the event. And then also really to the Happy Valley Business Association. Be remiss if I didn't name President Matt Naby for all his help. But for all of their ongoing support and the assistance that they provide for the fair. Really was a fantastic event. Talking about Sophie, kudos to her again, she did a really nice job of, we actually took our, our drone that we use for accident reconstruction, put it up this year and took video out around the perimeter of it. She did a really nice job putting together some photographs and that video and it's on our Facebook page. So if you haven't checked it out, it's kind of a neat little recap of the safety fair and gives you a pretty nice angle from, from up above, so. But great, a great event and we're really looking forward to the twenty-second annual next year. And as Suton, you had a good time there, got to put on some tactical equipment and check everything out, so. I do have a picture of that, so yeah, but anyway. Under training department activities, Officer Schaefer and Officer Slade are, are peer-to-peer, peer-to-peer support officers. They're on the, the regional team that we have here for any officers struggling, have an outlet that they can talk to that is confidential. So they went to a couple of different trainings geared towards that team. First was a law enforcement compassion fatigue training. Compassion fatigue training can cause law enforcement personnel to shut down mentally, physically, and emotionally. The second one was a survivor's guilt in law enforcement training. As we all know, law enforcement officers are regularly exposed to loss, to death, and grief in their work. And survivor's guilt is a normal reaction to surviving the life-threatening trauma when someone else does not. So they receive training on those two topics to help them and assist them as they do their work with any officers who need to speak. We actually have convened our peer-to-peer after a couple of the more traumatic incidents we've had here recently, some serious vehicle accidents where it's a good idea for us to debrief our officers to make sure that they're mentally okay based on the, the trauma that they saw at the scene. So it's been a great resource that we have here for, available to our officers in the county. And we're really happy and real proud of our team. They're doing a really great job.
What, um, Chief, sorry, what was the resource? I think I might have missed that. So it's just the training that you've had to be able to give that?
Yeah, so we, we have Officer Slade and Officer Schaefer here at Patent Township, but they're on a peer-to-peer support team.
Gotcha, sorry.
So yeah, there's, all the agencies in, in our, in the region participate in that as well, so, yep. And then Officer McCaslin attended a traffic safety DUI conference. Sergeant Stroud attended training on supervising or field training officer program. Officer Kaufman attended a crime prevention symposium and then Officer Finogio attended, actually it was a two-week firing investigator training. I attended a Big Brothers Big Sisters Advisory Committee meeting, the Humane Officer meeting, Behavioral Threat Management Team meeting, the opening night for the Citizens Police Academy, the Chiefs meeting, and also the community campus meeting. I had a couple photos, I see Larry's scrolling through my, my report here, so the first is Officer Tuskovich. You hear his name a lot, but I want to make sure you have a face with the name. We talk about him presenting in the schools quite frequently, so that is a photo of him presenting, as we said, talking to the sixth-grade classes about social media safety and usage. So that's over at the Park Forest Middle School. Next, we received a nice email from a township resident thanking our officers for, we conducted a kind of saturated traffic enforcement, speed enforcement on Crookwood Drive, had some success there. He, on his own, recognized and heard and saw that we did that, so just sent out a letter of appreciation to us. We had a couple of performance reports and I do like, again, I mean, I feel like it's a, a broken record here, but our officers do a fantastic job, so I would just want to take a few moments to recognize the officers involved in these two incidents that we, we recognized them in the month of September. First was Officer Sunderland and Officer Su Hu responding to an address for a domestic dispute. While en route to the residence, the officers were informed that a male and female were arguing and the male threatened to shoot himself. It was reported that the male had firearms in the residence. As the officers arrived, they observed the female in her car in the driveway and the male was reaching inside and heard kicking the car. The male then walked quickly back towards the residence. The officers immediately approached and Officer Sunderland quickly engaged the male in verbal communication and persuaded him to leave the doorway of the residence and walk to them, where they safely were able to take him into custody and calm him down. Ironically enough, a firearm was located just inside the residence, in the doorway into the residence. That male was eventually taken safely up to the hospital for a mental health evaluation, so they did a really nice job on that incident. And then a second one, Officer Slade and Sergeant Chapenko responded to an address for a report of a one-year-old male in cardiac arrest. Officer Slade arrived first, grabbed her AED and rushed into the home. She found the mother holding her motionless son. She took the child and immediately began providing aid. She determined that the child's airway was compromised and he might be choking on something. She gave the child back blows and chest compressions and she was able to locate a pulse eventually on the child and continued to administer back, back blows until the child began to cry. Sergeant Chapenko arrived on scene and officers reassessed the child by rechecking his airway and swiping his mouth-brainy obstructions. And then they monitored the child until advanced medical care arrived. And the child was taken to the hospital, breathing and had a pulse and was able to get more advanced treatment at the hospital. So both officers, fantastic job on that one as well. Obviously dealing with a child that young is, you know, something that we, lucky that we had a car very close in the neighborhood for that one too. Lastly is our record list of calls for service. Five-hundred-and-forty-seven, that's a, a pretty high number from the four-hundred-and-sixty-six that we handled in August. One-hundred-and-four of those were school checks, so our officers are very active in the school zones before and after school and then throughout the day checking on the schools to make sure everything is okay there. Sixty-one were traffic-related and then fifty-seven were EMS assists. And then lastly, I just want to mention again, talking about Sophie, I just had her post this on our social media this week. I think she did put on Nextdoor as well, I know somebody mentioned Nextdoor. This Saturday, the twenty-eighth, from ten AM until two PM, we're gonna be partnering with Wegmans to do a drug take-back event. We do have a drug take-back box that's available anytime that the, the office is open here. However, taking the show on the road to Wegmans, so anybody is, is, any, anything except pretty much needles. They won't, we won't accept needles, but any prescription medications you have that are old, expired, that are sitting in your medicine cabinet you want to get rid of, you can bring them to Wegmans in the entrance area where you pick up your shopping carts. We're gonna have a stand set up there and boxes to, to put them in. It's actually DEA, the National Drug Take-Back Day, but we'll have an officer sign there to, to assist with Wegmans, so. That's all I have.
Chief, what's the time again?
Uh, it's from ten AM until two PM, this Saturday, the twenty-eighth, at Wegmans.
Chief, I also have a question on the spin bike. Do you notify the spin bike company so they can pull these to individuals' account and terminate them? Or how, how does that work?
Um, yeah, no, I don't believe that we did reach out to them. To be honest with you, I don't know that we thought of that. I don't really know how that works. If they have an account that they have to use or if they can pay as they go. I'm not sure, yeah. I don't think we thought of that, so. Clearly they weren't using the bicycle appropriately or properly. But we also kind of took care of that by the, the criminal arrest.
Can I make a suggestion to talk to Susan Wheeler? She's very affluent with the spin bike company for our parks and areas, so. Thank you.
Used in commission of a crime or something like that, would y'all have had to take the spin bike?
We did not take the spin bike. We, I think we parked it and left it so that they could come pick it up.
Oh yeah, I know y'all didn't take it this time, I'm just saying if it like got, someone got in a car accident, for example, on the spin bike, because they were doing something, would y'all have taken that spin bike?
Yeah, I mean, obviously it would depend on the circumstances, but there is a chance that, you know, it might be entered into evidence or the property based on, on what it was used for, why it was involved in, in whatever incident we're investigating.
So yeah, it might be helpful to see if there's a way of checking in with the company to let them know that their, their thing was misused.
Yep, yep.
All right. Any other questions, Brett, too?
I'm gonna try to pull that running away with a spin bike from a cop.
Maybe get somebody else to ride on the handcart.
Riding the basket.
Okay, next one on the agenda is Public Works Operation Spongey Moth.
So Ken, why don't we tag-team on this one?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll kick it off and then Ken can fill in. So Joe Wilson from Wilson Ecological surveyed thirty-eight locations in the township during our 2023 egg mass count. And it appears that our areas that are severely infested and meet the control threshold are located north of ninety-nine. And we did put a map in your agenda packet. Essentially, what we're seeing is the area where we sprayed last, or this year rather, looks fine. It's the area north and there's a swath kind of from toff trees across that's problematic. So we wanted to get some direction tonight from the board on how you wanted to proceed with the Spongey Moth program, understanding that we won't decide the spray blocks until early winter. And we'll put this out for bid in the early winter because typically they spray in the spring, early spring, May timeframe. So the first question we have is just if you want to continue with our spraying program to control the spongy moths in 2024.
Yes.
Okay. And we do, we did spend sixty-five thousand dollars, a little bit over sixty-five thousand this year, and we're gonna look at some ways to save some money for next year. And then the next, and this is a unique situation that we have because of the spray area that we're looking at this year. We have a lot of large private properties that are included in the spray area. In twenty-three, we only had eight large private properties within our, our spray block, spray blocks that totaled approximately one-hundred-and-seventeen acres. They were fourteen acres each. So we didn't charge these properties to spray because in the grand scheme, they weren't the large majority of the block. The proposed area for, for 2024 contains several large private properties. And because of this, we kind of wanted to consider having the board agree to put a cap on how much of the acreage we would pay for and then offering to that property owner that over that acreage, they could still be in our spraying program, we would just charge them for the cost of the spraying. So they would still get the benefit of being the economy of scale, but they would be reimbursing Patent Township. And we were proposing setting that limit at five acres per property, so that if you had a large, and Ken can speak to the size of some of those properties.
Some of the properties we're talking about are over a hundred acres for one individual property owner. And as Amy had said, the areas we're talking about that are severely infested are very highly wooded properties as well. And I know we do have some private property owners that have had egg mass counts done by other ecologists or arborists. And so I know we have one individual from Pantops here where they had an individual do an egg mass count for them. And they're beyond the threshold of where treatment should be, you know, used to control that, so. And their properties are, some of the properties are larger and some of them are smaller. I can't speak to the average that you folks deal with.
Well, actually, most, we have about thirty.
Can you show the mic, please? And can you identify yourself, please?
Introduce yourself first. Right. So my name is Richard Hayes and I'm the current president of the Pantops HOA. And so in response to your question, our total acreage for our development is about a hundred-and-thirty acres. And we have about thirty homes, each of which is about an acre of property on their private parcel, plus or minus some. And then we have one parcel that is several acres, which was owned by the original parties that developed our neighborhood. So the rest of the, and then we've got several acres of the two roads that run through us. The rest of it is common land and it's forested. So we've got, I'll say, I think it's eighty-some acres of forest. Well, actually, the, the whole area is forested to one degree or another, but our common properties are about eighty-some acres. And as I said, the rest of them, plus or minus an acre for each lot, so. Should I just stay here since I was gonna make some comments later, so?
Sure. So if you want to look at an acreage limit, what we could do is we could run some numbers. We could have Ryan do some mapping and run some numbers to see what it would look like. And then you could set between five and ten acres, the township does, and we could try to see what that would cost, you know, versus what we did this year in terms of spraying, whatever you want to do.
I, I know Mr. Hayes does have, have a response from the Pantops Homeware Association that he wishes to make. So I think it may be a little bit premature for, for us to decide tonight, anything like that, in terms of acreage limit. Because it's quite possible that HOAs, not just Pantops, but Graysdale, HOA, the other HOAs that in, may wish to collaborate in some way. And so they ought to receive a different kind of consideration because they may be willing, the HOA itself may be willing to, to share a cost in, in some way.
Yeah, we were gonna, our thought process was after we discussed this with you all, and we were gonna send out letters to folks with large properties, the HOAs, and then have a conversation with them about this and, you know, how this would work. Like, we, we want to give people the opportunity, if they would like to be involved, if they own, you know, we have a gentleman that owns a hundred acres. If you have a hundred acres and maybe it's only a percentage of your property, right, that needs to be sprayed, but you'd like to participate, we'd like to give you the opportunity to do that.
My question is if an, an individual cannot or does not participate with our partnership, would that mean that the spongy moth would grow and infest beyond that area? That, you know, even with a spraying, would other areas be affected?
If you're talking about if we have an individual that would be referred to as a detractor that doesn't want to have their property sprayed, since we're a municipality, we have to provide them a five-hundred-foot buffer around that property. And we had that last year where we had one individual that didn't want their property sprayed and they happened to be in the middle of a spray block. So we had quite a few properties that we weren't able to spray. But we did talk to those individuals and sent them notifications that the township would reimburse them for the cost that the township would have incurred to spray their property if they do have a commercial sprayer come in and spray it for them. They can, they would be able to spray their own pro, personal property, but we couldn't since, you know, they had a detractor within that distance of their property.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think Mr. Hayes has some remarks.
Okay.
Well, first off, I appreciate the opportunity to make a few remarks. And as was mentioned, we did send the results of our own egg mass count into Ken and, and Amy got back to us immediately. So I'd say right at the outset, I've talked with Ken a couple times since last spring. And so we appreciate the accessibility and the responsiveness. For us, it's a big issue because essentially our whole neighborhood is wooded. And there's trees on all of the private parcels and of course, and our roads run through the property so that we've got the common lands running right up to the properties and basically surrounding and, and they weave in and out of where our homes have been built. So for us, the risk is that with the infestation, that it could essentially, it's worse in some spots than others, but it could spread through the entire property. And Donnie Coffey did intend to be here, he's the arborist that we used last spring, although I had a message from him, he had a flat tire on his truck or his trailer, I guess, and so he's not gonna make it. He was over in Tyrone. So in any event, but I will make a couple of comments because he's done various properties throughout the township and, and we've talked about that. In any event, the results of his egg mass counts are in the common areas, which are largely undeveloped. The counts are five sixty to seven twenty egg masses per acre. As you approach the developed parcels, those counts go up. And so many of our developed lots have as many as a thousand forty to twelve hundred per acre. So it's a pretty severe, it's a significant infestation throughout the property. So it's a pretty severe, it's a significant infestation throughout the property, but it's really pretty severe surrounding our homes. We were not included in the spraying last time because when the egg mass counts were done, they were very low. So our infestation in the spring resulted from the larva being blown in by the wind. And at that point, by the time we discovered it, it was too late to be included in the town's program. Those of us that discovered it then contracted with Donnie to have a ground spraying done, which is beneficial but still limited. We had quite a number of other homeowners that did not really focus on this in time to even get the spraying done before, you know, at a certain point in the spring, it's ineffective. So in any event, we were anxious to be included in whatever the township does. We recognize it's a tricky situation because as Ken has told me and Donnie also repeated, it's not universal throughout the township. Some areas are largely unaffected, others moderately, and others much more severe. And so I know if the whole township were affected, it makes decisions pretty easy. So we recognize it's kind of a tricky situation. Inherently, we recognize there's probably going to be limits on what the township feels that it can do for cost, if nothing else. So, and we're prepared to fill that gap in to the extent that we have to do it. So that's not an issue for us. So in any event, that's the story for us. And the other thing about it is it is severe enough that it's infecting several, just about every kind of tree in our development. They have their favorites, but the fact of the matter is we, we have, we have blue spruce trees that are affected from top to bottom by it. And, and so essentially, we have some, some gypsy moths on every kind of tree that we have in our development. So if that gives you an idea. Just to summarize what Donnie had told me, he's done a number of properties in the township and the results sound consistent with what Ken and his team found, or Joe Wilson found. Namely, that there are gaps, but some areas are infested, some moderately, others to quite severe. And as I said, I know that makes it trickier when you try to put together a strategy by definition. So if there were any questions, but otherwise, I appreciate your time and this. And once again, I appreciate the accessibility and responsiveness.
Ellie?
This is a philosophical question. We can't control where it's going to snow.
Can you speak to that?
We can't control where it's going to snow, but we have to plow the roads. And the same with the fire department. If something is burning, they have to put the fire out. And this almost seems like with the wind situation, it can blow the, these things to any property. And so it almost seems like it should be a service that's provided, but how do we pay for it? And I don't have the answer to that, but I, I think putting it on the individual property owner is a little difficult because they're paying property taxes on their whole property. And I suspect that if you have a hundred acres, you're paying more than if somebody has one acre. It may not be a one-to-one correspondence, though. So I don't know what the answer to it, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a region-wide problem. And maybe there should be some type of solution other than, okay, these are on your properties, but you've got to pay. And then if you don't do it, then the stuff blows onto somebody else's property and they wind up having to pay because you didn't spray. So I don't know what, how you get out of that.
Any other board member?
Sutana, something.
Sutana, I'm sorry.
You're fine. I mean, I, I understand the responsibility we have to, to do this mitigation measure. And I do think there needs to be some type of limit to like how much the entire, sort of like taxpayer base here in Patent Township is going to, you know, pay for an individual private sort of like property. So for me, I'm in favor of like trying to find some cap for like acreage. I think we incentivize enough of saying we can pay back up to whatever, you know, the amount if they want to, you know, find their own person. But I, I don't think that, yeah, the, the whole of taxpayers should be paying for one particular or a few, you know, entities that have large, sort of like acreage. I think that feels reasonable and fair and equitable to have some expectation that they can contribute a little bit to that. Even though they pay a lot in taxes, I get that, but I don't think things work like that.
Yeah, I actually was going to ask the detail of that five percent or whatever percentage. I'm assuming it would be around the perimeter of the property or in an area of property that was adjacent to someone else?
Yeah, we haven't gotten quite that far yet. We had proposed the five acres, but what we could do, and I think it might be helpful if we did this, we can do some mapping to show you what five, ten, maybe twenty acres would look like. And then also use some cost estimates to show you what the cost would be. Now, understanding, when we started looking at this again for next year, I reached out to the county because when we had gypsy moth, spongy moth, excuse me, back in twenty-ten, the county had done spraying, but the county got money from the state to do the spraying. So I reached out to the county and they said, no, we're not doing any spraying. That's something municipalities have to do. So then I reached out to all of our neighboring municipalities, plus Benner and Spring, and they all, Benner, Spring, College, all indicated, and Harris, I believe, that they would like to go with us on the spraying program. So if we do a regional spray program, that is likely, and Joe Wilson and Ken and I were discussing this last week or two weeks ago, that's likely going to drop our costs down per acre. So, you know, we're estimating ninety dollars an acre to pay for spraying right now for budgeting purposes, but it may be less than that if we're, if we do a regional spray and they're able to come in and do the whole area. So we can run some numbers for you so that you can look at that. You know, we're not in any rush because we don't really need to put this out to bid until probably February timeframe. So we can come back, maybe, you know, once we're finished with the budget in late November or December and talk about this again and look at some numbers.
And I'm sorry, this gentleman, you said your area was not on the originally proposed spray, spray area?
Last year.
It wasn't, wasn't in the twenty-twenty-three spray block.
Okay.
What had happened was, as he had said, larvae had blown in. And so they had an infestation this year. But looking at the numbers of the egg masses they have now, the infestation will be much worse in twenty-twenty-four because of the proximity of the egg masses to their trees. So it, it's one that, no, we had to cut it off somewhere last year and so they didn't rise to that level. And they're well beyond the level now.
Yeah, our infestation was, I'd say, almost completely from wind. And we didn't discover it in time. So, and so as a result of that, that was the first time I talked with Ken, was to say we ended up with a pretty significant infestation, even though we hadn't had the egg masses originally. And so I asked that we be included in the township's count for this fall, which he did. And then because we'd had work done by Donnie for a number of us, and then he's talked with quite a number of our other homeowners, he said he would go ahead and do an egg mass count because the township's count would, would look to the common areas, but not the private parcels. And so we wanted to check on the private parcels, give us more information. And then obviously, whatever else he did would help to confirm what the township was doing. And so then, as soon as that was done, we provided it to Ken.
Got it. So you are slated to be taken care of in the springtime?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
As he had said, the issue is we need to program ahead of time where we're going to spray because you want to have the spray, you want to make sure you have enough leaf mass there and you have enough larva hatching to make it beneficial for you use the chemicals as useful as possible. I mean, to get the biggest bang for your buck. And once the larva gets so large, then they're really, you're fighting an uphill battle for them to ingest enough to meet their demise. They have to eat too much of the tree.
Ken, Mark?
Concern is that it's unpredictable. We do not know which wave of wind is going to blow these lobbies. What to Mr. Hayes' area, community. There may be other communities that have a hardship, you know, that can't pick up. That's where my concern is coming, that what happens to those communities that cannot pick up on us charging them? I, I, I agree with working some figures out, but it also needs to be an education piece, that our community needs to educate us, you know? And we need to educate them that this is a possibility, that the lava can be blown to your, your property. And it may cost you, A, B, and C. And then I have, I'm, I'm kind of with my, my chair with charging individuals. I think we're getting ready to hit them with a tax increase. And now you're getting ready to hit them with a spongy moss increase. So I'm looking forward to sitting down to, you know, the figures.
Yep.
But I'm also looking at, our communities are getting ready to get hit, hit with this. That's, yeah, no.
Well, I was just going to say, they're going to get hit either way. And if we end up paying for forty-nine acres at how much an acre?
Ninety dollars an acre.
Ninety dollars an acre.
Okay.
Then that means that taxpayers are going to be paying for private property to be protected. So that's a pretty big hit itself. So we're already anticipating, we've already projected a fairly substantial outlay for gypsy moth. The other thing you have to keep careful, you absolutely cannot predict. But the last thing you want to do with what's called integrated pest management is to overspray. And it's actually advisable, and this is standard practice, I have to spend a full summer doing this one year, to, to underspray. And then if need be, you spray the contaminated area the following year. But there is a risk, there is, it's a bacillus thurgensis that really impacts larvae of butterflies, moths and butterflies predominantly. And they, they time it so that it doesn't impact the monarch, which is of course not only a conservation concern, but also a public perception concern, monitor blood. So you, you, you don't want to overspray. I don't think we want to spray for private property. Those people own their property, they will turn a considerable profit at some point. If I find that property, I would say the same thing.
Okay.
So, you know, I think it is a subject for further dialogue.
Okay. Any other, any other?
Just one last question, and that was just, we alluded to doing a joint spraying program. If we do the joint spraying program, I think Patent Township would be well-suited to take the lead on doing the bid for everyone. And then, of course, we would bill out the other municipalities. Just wanted to make sure you were okay with us doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Leader of Claire's State of Emergency?
Thanks.
The spongy moth emergency?
Come tell private.
I'm in a domain or something?
I'm just kidding, CNET. Not trying to take over people's private property.
The late seventies, they were so thick that the roads almost had to be solid because it got so slippery from all of the yucky stuff that fell off the trees into the roads.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Fall Road Report. And Ken, our Director of Public Works?
Just wanted to first go over our proposed projects for twenty-twenty-four. In twenty-twenty-four, we're looking at working on North Oak Lane from Galen to Douglas Drive. It's approximately sixteen hundred and sixty feet. We did look at North Oak Lane from West Gate to Galen Drive, but looking at the preliminary numbers that we came up with, to do that section of roadway was going to be in the excess of seven hundred thousand dollars. So we backed off and decided that we would stop at Douglas Drive. We're hoping to get that out to bid in early twenty-four so that we can assess what we will have left in our budget to utilize. And at that point in time, we'll be looking at using some micro-surfacing to extend the length or the life of roadways so that we can try to prolong some roadways a little bit more. We're also looking at getting a new system to evaluate our roadways. The system we use currently was developed by the township engineer in the late eighties. And it works, but it also works too well for some roads that have high ADTs. Like if you look at the road report, and one of the sections of Toff Trees is listed to have a rating of thirty-five already, and that road was just over laid two years ago. We have other roads that if you go out and you look, you can see they're deteriorated severely compared to that road. But the ADT of it, the amount of traffic on that road drives the report to elevate that road much higher on the list. So what we're looking at is a system that uses artificial intelligence. So it takes out any human error and we go out, drive all the township roadways and so forth. And the system evaluates and gives us a rating of the pavement sections. Because what we want to do is we want to see that wheel start from the back, go counterclockwise instead of going clockwise. We would like to see, you know, the fare number get smaller and the very good, and the good number to become larger.
And if you're not familiar, the micro-surfacing process that Ken mentioned, so we've used it sparingly in the past here in Patent Township. Ferguson actually does a regional contract every year and you can get on that contract. Micro-surfacing is a polymer-based asphalt that you put down. It basically seals the road, it used to be called slurry seal. And if you have a road that doesn't have a high ADT and doesn't have a lot of defects in it, it works very well. And then forgiving you maybe up to seven years before you have to go and pave the road. So that helps to extend the money that you're spending on your roads. So Ken, Glenn, and I sat down and talked about going out and looking at a couple of the roads and trying to use it. The one issue with micro-surfacing is just that the way it gets put down, you have to close the road for a period of time while it's being put down. When we did it in the past, we actually closed the road and did it at night. So it was a less of a disruption to our residents. But it, it is a good product, it works well. I've used it in other municipalities that I've worked in and it's helped spread our road money around. So with things costing more, it's just something we thought we would try on a couple of the roads. Glenn, I defer to Glenn and Ken because they're obviously the experts, but Glenn has some roads that he wants to look at. So we're going to investigate that for twenty-four and beyond and see how it works.
One thing, before we do any micro-surfacing, we do need to do those. We need to go out and seal the road up and make sure that we have all the cracks sealed and so forth. Some of those sections that we're hoping to, you know, have some funds to micro-surface this coming spring, we're actually working on this fall, crack sealing and so forth. So the, the weather's been good, the crew's been really covering a lot of ground. They've been doing very good with crack sealing. I mean, normally we go through about a pallet of crack seal material. We actually put an order in for our third pallet. So, and every, every time they run out and they use crack sealing material, we're saving our roadway because we're keeping water from infiltrating into the asphalt. And during the winter months, we have three, three-slaw cycle that expands and pushes roads apart and so forth. So it looks kind of like a So it looks kind of like a roadmap at times, it doesn't look as nice, but it preserves the pavement.
Yep. Elliot?
Does anybody still use the soil cement process?
Actually, whenever we had redone the reclaiming on Scotia Road from Meeks Lane to Marysville, that was basically soil cement. They came in with a, a large mill that grinds up the existing, then they incorporate Portland cement with it, put it back, roll it, or they grade it then, roll it into place, and then we cap it with asphalt. And that's what that road was completed with just a year, year and a half ago.
Because Valley Vista Drive was done that way originally, and when they did it the first time, it like began cracking almost immediately. And the manager at that time had to contact the, the contractor who didn't believe that this had happened. And when this contractor actually came out to visit, he said, this isn't the kind of work we do, we're going to redo this. But that has held up amazingly for twenty, thirty, at least, years.
Mm-hmm.
Quick pivot, quick pivot while I'm thinking about it. The Sco- there was some graffiti over in Scotia, Meeks Lane, the Scotia Range, out there in Grayswoods, on the, on the sign that enters to like the Range and whatever, back there, there was some graffiti there, and then I think on one of our signs, speed signs. Is anyone aware of that?
Yep, the speeds on the sign is being replaced. The Scotia Range sign is actually, that's the game commission sign for them to replace, but they're aware of it as well.
Well, whoever did that, we're going to find. It's inappropriate.
Ken?
Just a question. You said the roads, if you're going to do the micro-surface, it had to be closed for a period of time. Grayswoods Boulevard is indicated as one you're thinking about. I can't imagine you would close the entire Grayswood Boulevard, you just close one side?
We're going to, yes, it, it will be one, one side, and we'll have, you know, traffic control and so forth. It, it only needs to actually stay closed, depending on the, the temperature and the humidity and so forth, between one and three hours.
Oh.
Usually what it works.
Yeah, so if you do it at night, it really doesn't bother hardly any of the people using the road, because there are very, just not that much traffic out there.
True, but if we, if we're going to do like an area of Grayswoods Boulevard at night or something, we would actually probably ask ourselves for a noise waiver because it would be violation of our noise ordinance.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Sixty days.
No, 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 me, sorry.
Brian, can I have a question on the Galen Drive to Douglas? Are you coming from North Attletown, Galen to Douglas, or are you going from Amblewood up?
We're going from Galen Drive down to Douglas.
Oh, okay.
And if you look at the rating, you're going to ask me, Ken, why are you doing that? Because that section of road rates in seventy-eight, and the next section from Douglas to West Gate rates in eighty-one. It's because we're looking at just the pavement, but unfortunately, from Galen to Douglas, in the past, they had overlaid the roadway, and they overlaid the gutter pan, and we had curbs and gutters there. What happened is it was overlaid twice. So we had a gutter that was this deep when we started, we overlaid it once, we cut it in half. We overlaid it again, now we have about a half inch or inch of reveal on the curb. So we have a water issue, as steep as that section of road is, the water is going down the road, going over the back of the curb, getting in and eroding the soil, and also getting in underneath sidewalks and eroding. So we want to get that corrected first, because as I say, we're correcting, you know, mistakes of the past, because whenever you overlay the gutter pan, you compromise your stormwater control system for that road. So that's what we're doing, is we're putting the stormwater controls back in when we put new curbs and gutters in place, whenever we overlay the roads. Unfortunately, if we were just, if we didn't have to do the curbs and gutters and so forth, yes, we could do a lot more overlay work on the township roadways, because to install new curbs and gutters is extremely expensive.
Will you be contacting the schools regarding where the schools are not in session? Because the school buses use that route quite often.
Yep.
Yep. It's, it's even the same as this year, we attempted to have our overlay contract completed prior to schools starting and so forth. And it was just the first day or so, I believe, they, they were out actually working. And this year, the Water Authority is actually going to be installing a new main on North Oak Lane. They're going to put a new main in from Galen Drive, clear down to Park Force Avenue. And so that's kind of driving some of our overlay work as well, because Patent Township, UHA, and the State College Borough Water Authority are upgrading lines in a lot of Patent Township roadways. This year, the Water Authority installed a new main on Canterbury Drive, which was a road then we overlaid. So they'll be working, and we've been coordinating with them so that their waterline installation is going to start at Galen and go toward Douglas and back toward Park Force Avenue, so that they'll be completed prior to us coming in to do the overlay work.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. I was just concerned in that, when you're talking about waterline, and since we just went through the same whole situation, we definitely want to keep an eye on it.
Mm-hmm.
Any other board member? Elliot?
Could we consider a five-minute break?
Oh, I'm just asking.
Um, take a five-minute break? Thank you.
We have a gag. Yeah.
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 Exactly.
We're in a gang.
I had a pentagram and a bunch of other stuff. I'm over there.
I mean, I'll send you all the, you know, the hot to. You need it.
What you need is.
I think everybody's going, I, I put everybody down. And worse comes to us, I can't wait.
What you need is, needs to be like, give you a code so that you can lock the bike out.
I know.
Yeah.
They have a venue, they're like five to seven, they'll have like a bar or a theater. And then dinner is at, I don't know, but it's over by eight. No, it's, trick or treat.
Yeah.
Oh, God, thank you.
Yeah, I'll send y'all a reminder. Yeah, I'll get it. It's up now. Hold up a little. Then Mike, enjoy some. Oh gee, I'm sorry, someone told me thirty-eight. Um, let me find my, what I'm talking about. I mean, it's a nice door, I usually when a door provides, I'll be. Yeah, and they kind of better, it doesn't really, um, yeah, I'll be there, so I'll, um, last chance. Hi.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it makes me happy. Yeah. I can't, I said that to him. Yeah. Sure, if you want to go to that, yeah, just let me know and I'll register you. Yeah, sure. Shoot me an email so I don't know what I'm, shoot me an email so I don't forget. See, Tom, he can't be in trouble. He'll be censored.
Okay.
It is very true.
Yeah.
Don't zoom in, see then.
We're reconvening, I mean, um, were there any other questions for Ken? For the board? Seeing none. Next on the agenda is the engineering, planning, and zoning. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty, K Stewart subdivision planning module.
So Meeks Engineering submitted a component to planning module for the K Stewart subdivision. The subdivision proposes the creation of a new residential lot from an existing lot along Meeks Lane. Subdivision proposes two new septic systems, one for each lot, for a total flow of eight hundred gallons per day. Leslie Warner reviewed the planning module before she left us, and she had no outstanding comments. The sewage enforcement officer approved and signed the module. So if you guys are ready to approve it, you just need to approve the resolution.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? The resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty is approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the administration. Proposed ordinance twenty twenty-three dash six thirty, thirty-two withdrawing from the local planning program.
So, we had previously, the board had previously indicated its intention to withdraw from the local, uh, planning program. Uh, we have to do that by ordinance, that we have to pass by the end of this year. So I prepared a draft ordinance, which I sent to the solicitor, and then I put it your place tonight. She had a couple of, um, changes. They were very minor, but one thing we did add, because there was concern expressed by the board, that we wanted COG to know this was just local planning. So she added a section five that just says, we're going to continue to participate in the rest of the COG programs, and this is just for that specific program. So if you guys are comfortable with it, we'll put it, need to put it out for public hearing at your November meeting, and then action.
All right, um.
Just clarification. If the new director of planning is able to hire a, a local planner, and we can get the local planning service, services from COG in twenty twenty-four, and, and it looks like there, we can continue to get local planning services from COG, how do we then, uh, reverse this ordinance so that we?
Yeah, so I would, um, want to reach out to Betsy for that, our solicitor, but I believe it's spelled out in the COG Articles of Agreement. I know that the Borough has done this at one time. They were going to withdraw from the code program many years ago, um, and then they rescinded that. So I think we just have to rescind the ordinance, um, but we will find that out. My hope is, um, I participated in the planning director watching the presentations. Larry, um, took my spot and did the interviews for me, because I had to go out of town. But, um, I was very happy to see two of the candidates. Two of the candidates were very strong. And the third candidate was also a good candidate, but the two, two just stood out to me. There was one that stood out even more. And the comment I made to, um, the HR director at the COG was, if you hire one of these two candidates, I, I'm, I'm thinking they're going to be able to bring us planners. Uh, this one person had did, done this in the other place where this person had been. So I said, if that happens, I, I could see the Patent Township Board having a conversation about wanting to stay in. You know, if we're able to get the level of services that we want. So, I'm hopeful that COG rise, the Center Region Planning Agency rises, rises again, and we can rescind this ordinance. And I, there is a process to do it, and that's a conversation, you know, the board would be able to have month five through six, to see how things are going halfway through the year.
Amy, can we, can, can we put this off until we talk to Betsy? Is she on?
No, Betsy's not on. So Betsy, um, she made the changes. All you're doing is setting up, and they were very minor, minor changes. I took an ordinance from another municipality. We all have been kind of sharing these things. They were very minor changes. She and I discussed the making sure that it said it was just for local planning and nothing else. Um, she'll likely be at your November meeting, but you could put this up for a public hearing at the November meeting, and then you can act on it then, but she likely would be there.
Great, okay. Can I get a motion to approve this moving forward to public meeting?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections? Amy, you put this for November?
Yep.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda is the vacancy authorities, boards, and commissions, ABC, for twenty twenty-four.
So it looks like, uh, based on the folks that I reached out to, that we will have two vacancies that we'll be looking to fill. Our CNET representative is stepping down at the end of his term. And then we have the new representative to the brand-new Human Relations Commission that, uh, was created by the joint ordinance that the Borough, Patton, and Ferguson Townships did. Um, in addition, and we talked about this last month, um, our reps to the Airport Authority would like to step down. Um, and I had actually, uh, had a resident, William Studler, reach out. He was previously on our planning commission. He's interested in serving on, um, the Airport Authority. So I wasn't sure if you wanted to go ahead and start the process. I know there's an interview process that typically, um, Elliot and Pam and the manager participate in. If you want to do that with him now, or if you just want to wait till the end of the year, since we're so close to the end of the year, um, or how you wanted to do that. And I just, uh, wanted to make sure I was following the appropriate process, since I wasn't here before for this.
Listen to you, Elliot. Um, Betsy?
Which do you think is, uh, easiest?
So I, um, I, I looked at the application. It looked great.
Yeah.
Um, I say why put it off?
Okay.
I, we've seen his work on the board. He had three very strong people who recommended him. I know all of them, so.
But which, which board would we put him on?
Oh, he wanted to be on the Airport Authority Board.
Okay, well, let's take off with that.
Yeah. No, that's, that's, that was one of our attachments.
Dan?
Well, our normal process is, is to, is to have Betsy and Elliot in, interview the candidates. So I don't think we should void that process, uh, so that we're consistent. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
We'll start up.
We can do that before your next, your November meeting, if that works.
Thanks for the reminder. Can I still put my hat and a ring for it?
No.
Sure.
So do you still want info on the ABCs? Because I had a couple of things to add.
Sure.
The interview report.
So.
What, what do you?
Help with the interview.
Okay. So Amy wanted to, information on, on, or wanted some feedback on what we do right now, and also what's up on the website. And I know we've talked about this, so the history, Jessica Buckland and I worked with Larry a lot for a while to set up the website, and I'm so excited to get this done. But one of the things that we talked about early on with the ABCs, um, I'm just going back in my mind in notes to things that we wanted to have on there. Um, and then Anita T. has also mentioned this. So for each ABC have the month, like the monthly schedule, meeting schedule? And I, I would love to see the names of the members of the current ABC. I think it, um, it's, it's way of elevating, you know, it's a, it's a point of pride that they're serving on these committees. And also for anybody who might be interested in any one of the committees, and they know somebody who's on it, they can ea, reach out and easily contact them. I'd also like to see next to each person their term. So that anybody, you know, recently retired, commented the area, and is scouting about for something to do, they're going to look at the, the boards, the ABCs, and say, well, it looks like this person is up, and I like that committee, so. Let's see. And then some are just add, add, maybe at the beginning of it, a recommendation to attend a few meetings to determine if you're interested in that area, and then become familiar with current issues. I tell that to everybody who asks me about any of the ABCs, yeah. Okay, thanks.
To, um, our veteran board members, have there ever been a, um, elected official on any of these commissions?
Who do you mean?
Like the CNET representative?
I think they have to be two separate.
They have to, okay.
Yeah, well, I, so I was a member of the, uh, Open Space Stewardship Committee, and once I was elected supervisor.
Right.
Step down from that.
Okay, that's what I needed.
I don't, I don't know about CNET, though, because they're a separate entity from the township. And I know that, I think at one time Doug or Tom Kurtz were, was on the CNET board. And I think, I think it was Doug. I, I'll have to check. He is all, he has pretty good records upstairs.
Can we, can we check?
Yeah.
Just to make sure.
Yeah.
Were you thinking of somebody on the board that we'd want to do?
Yeah, open it up.
Yeah. I guess, so I, I want to share my philosophy, which is to, um, cast as broad a net as we can, and, um, share the wealth.
Yeah.
Um, plus, we, we all as board members do a lot with our various committee responsibilities, so. And it's, it's also a way to grow potential new board members, bringing people into the fold. So that's just my.
No.
My philosophy.
Any other comment? Any comments from our township manager?
Nope.
Moving on. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Has everyone got an opportunity to review?
I, I move that we accept the listed items on the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on. Next on the agenda is the management report.
Yes. So I just have a couple of, uh, items to update you on. And first, this one's not on my report, but it's, we're pinch hitting tonight a little bit. Um, as Larry mentioned during the CIP discussion, we don't yet have the final COG budget numbers. So we were scheduled to have our budget meeting on November first, and then a meeting on November eighth, and then a meeting on November fifteenth. Um, I would like to do what you guys did last year, which is to postpone the meeting on the first, and instead meet November eighth, and just focus on the budget at that meeting. And then November fifteenth will be your regular meeting, and you can do the tentative adoption of the budget. And then we're on schedule to formally adopt it in December. So if that's okay, we'll just cancel that meeting on November first.
Okay.
Elliot?
Second.
Can, I just want to check something, uh, calendar, because we need feedback.
We need feedback on the, uh, COG, um, budget, uh, by the ni- nine?
That's still.
The, the.
You're right.
It will, it, it will, we'll have plenty of time with the eighth.
Yeah, he's also.
Because I told them that our meeting was on the eighth.
Yeah, and Mr. Norenberg has also been previously scheduled to come to that meeting.
Okay.
Figuring we would focus on our budget on the first. So we'll just push everything off a week, and that gives Larry and I time to get the final numbers, and Larry, time to finish the budget, so, okay.
So I would also, so I've actually handed out something that I'm going to refer to in the committee report, but it, it's something that I think we might actually want to have as an item on the agenda on the eighth. To give people time to digest it, and also to give it its due, uh, exposure. It's a lot of, it has to do with changes in the waste hauling contract.
We could, we could do that on the fifteenth.
No, because we need to get, um, feedback to the Climate Action Committee on the thirteenth.
So maybe we could reach out to the Climate Action Committee, because the eighth is going to be just your budget, and I would like to just focus on your budget and the COG budget. I think that's going to be a, a lengthy meeting.
Yeah.
I can reach out to Shelley if you want.
Well, I mean, I'm. I'm the one, I'm the Shelley.
Oh, okay.
I guess, so I'm tasked with getting feedback.
Oh, okay.
From the board.
I didn't know if Shelley had set the deadline, though, is what I'm saying.
Oh, we just, she just wants this information by November, because we're, you know, we just have this deadline for contract coming up. But I can also talk about it at the end of the meeting today.
Okay.
So that's fine. I just, it's, it's.
Okay.
I just know everybody's tired, but I will plow on.
Okay, just a couple of other items to note. Um, the Clearview Avenue rezoning request will be discussed at the November second, uh, CRPC meeting. That's at the COG building. Uh, Jim May is going to present the rezoning analysis that Leslie did before she left. Um, I will be attending. I believe Bill Burnett from the Planning Commission is also going to be attending with me, and then we have our rep to the CRPC as well. So that way we're covered if anybody has any questions. And if that process moves forward out of there, the board will likely see it again in January. I don't want to do anything in the November, December timeframe because of the holidays, and I don't want folks to feel like we're rushing something. Um, Dave Gustine, who is our representative to the CNET board, was awarded the twenty twenty-three Robert W. Barbash Award for Outstanding Contributions in Support of CNET. Uh, Mr. Gustine has served on the CNET board since twenty sixteen. He'll end his term at the end of this year, and his time at the end of this year. And he's been the board secretary since twenty seventeen. Uh, the award was presented October tenth at the CNET Board of Directors meeting, so congratulations to him. Um, staff is meeting October thirty-first with representatives from CBICC, College Township, Benner Township, and the airport to discuss, uh, the zoning and the challenges around the airport. One of the discussion items, and it's long been a discussion, uh, here in Patent Township, was to look at our zoning in the planned airport district. Um, in talking with CBICC and College Township in particular, they're looking at doing some things on their official map to create a connector road to the airport, more of a direct connection, and some other things. So we want to sit down and talk, and see if we could get some synergy around some goals for that area. And if the three of us could have similar zoning in the area, that would help, perhaps, with what's going on out there. Because that is, I think, seen if that connector road comes in as a potential growth area for some, you know, industrials, some commercial, that kinds of things. So that's an ongoing, um, discussion. This one's kind of exciting. The municipal managers talked last Friday about attainable housing. Um, we are one of the few municipalities that does not have a workforce housing ordinance. And one of the things I discussed with Missy Schoonover from the Center County Housing and Land Trust was seeing if the board is interested in considering workforce housing regulations. Uh, Ferguson, State College, and College all have regulations. And we were talking about if all of us had the same regulations, that would make it easier. When developers come in, they would know what to expect. Missy suggested that, you know, if that's a conversation, we could start that conversation. Uh, we're actually, our group is meeting again in early November. We've invited the development community to talk about attainable housing, and why we feel it's important, and some, some of the impediments that we've had, we've seen towards it, and how we can move this forward. We've also discussed, um, Ferguson and State College have done a lot more on this, and College is doing a lot. But we've discussed bringing in a national developer, because the national developers, from what we were told in the meeting, they're used to doing attainable housing. They're used to seeing workforce housing goals. So they come in, and they look at the ordinance in State College, and they go, oh, okay, this makes sense. We'll do these units. Or, oh, okay, we've did, done the cost benefit. We'll pay you the fee in lieu, instead. So I think there's some movement to make this happen. Adam Brumbach, the College Township manager, sits on the Center County Housing and Land Trust Board. He had a great graphic that showed an umbrella and explained the continuum of the AMI, the Area Median Income, and how the lower continuum has a lot more options than what's the missing middle, the folks that need the workforce housing, the teachers and the nurses, and, you know, your police officers and firefighters, and things that want to live in your community. And focusing some efforts and some education, and I know, um, Pam and Betsy and I have talked about this, and how you can educate the community that these are the folks that want to live in our community, and they serve our community, and how can we help them? So there's some good discussions going on. I'm excited to be a part of those discussions. And my I thought process was, you know, maybe January, February timeframe, the board and the Planning Commission could have a work session with Missy to start talking about workforce housing ordinances, and what that would look like. And when we say attainable housing regulations, College Township, I didn't even know this. They had a new, um, housing unit come in, Aspen Heights, which is predominantly student housing, but has seventeen attainable housing units in it that are full. And when they're full, they're full by grad students who qualify under the income limits. So there's a real stigma attached to this, and there's a real education piece that is needed. But I think we're moving the needle somewhat within the region, and these discussions are pretty exciting that they're happening. So if you guys are amenable, I can get Missy to come, you know, early winter timeframe and get the Planning Commission, and we can just do a joint session with her.
Thanks for your enthusiasm.
Yeah.
That's great.
It's kind of the first time this has happened, so, in a long time, so. Um, the appreciation dinner is typically held in early winter in Toftrees. Toftrees is closing right after the last home game, so they're not able to help us. They're closing in November. Um, we were talking internally about possible locations. Uh, Mitney Valley Sports Center would be one, possibly. Refarm Cafe might be one. There's also the opportunity of going outside of the township, and, you know, College Township's just over the line, so the Penn Stater's close. We could think about something like that. Um, I know a bunch of the municipalities, Benner College, and I think Harris, all go to Mountain View, so that's another option. But just some guidance on where you'd like to be, and then we can try to figure that out, um, where we want to go. And, and looking at also maybe revamping the program for that a little bit, so that we're focusing on recognizing longevity with our employees, longevity with our volunteers, and then volunteers and elected officials that are leaving us at the end of their terms. So if you have any thoughts, let me know. And if anybody wants to help, you know, be a part of planning it, let me know that as well.
I just wanted to throw out something real quick. I, I heard about, um, one municipality, or I can't remember what it was, that have active picnics. And I was thinking along, I know it's a different season, so I'm not suggesting January, um, but along the ideas of the, um, Cannibals Day or the Employee Day. It, it just, it might be a little more relaxed. I mean, I, I, don't get me wrong, I actually like the, um, appreciation dinner. The food's always good, and it's fun to see people, but it's, it is a little formal.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know. Just, just a thought.
They got picnic in January?
Not in January.
Uh, when's the appreciation dinner again?
Appreciation dinner's usually in the winter, but we could move it to the summer. Ferguson does a picnic at Tuda Park.
That's where I heard it.
Yeah.
At Centuries, I think that's where it is.
They, they did, it looked like that a nice turnout, too.
I mean, goodness knows, we have the parks.
And we have nice pavilions, too. So we can explore all the options. Okay, and then just a couple more things. I know we're getting late in the hour here. Um, the Open Space Committee met October twelfth, and one of the things they're talking about right now, the Game Commission has a program that would help with management activities on our open space. It's called the four hundred areas program. We would actually look at enrolling Grayswoods into this program. It's free. And then you work with the Game Commission to come up with, um, what kinds of things you want them to help with management. The area has to be open to hunting and trapping, which it is now. Um, so the committee's going to discuss this again, and talk about the pros and cons of joining the program at their November meeting. One of the conversation pieces that we had after the open space tour was that, since Scotia and the Grayswoods Preserve are literally next to each other, the ecosystems are obviously the same, so it makes sense to look at some kind of similar management. We just don't know if maybe joining this program in a formal way makes sense, or if it just makes sense to adopt similar management goals as what the Game Commission has out there already. So that's an ongoing discussion piece, and I know Betsy was at that meeting as well. Um, you'll also be seeing amendments to the open space, uh, regulations. There's just some minor things we need to clean up in that ordinance, so we'll be doing that at your November board meeting. And then just, um, I'll just direct your attention to just all the nice park updates. Brunel Road is just about done. Um, we did have a group that came in that wants to help fundraise to do some additional work on the pump track, track out there. So the rec committee, RAC, is going to be discussing that at their November twenty-first, uh, meeting again. They started talking about it. Um, yeah, but our parks are doing awesome. They had the kickoff meeting for the Cricklewood Drive Bike Pedestrian Improvements Project. So that engineering process will be moving forward into next year. So, and with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any board members have any questions? Seeing none. Next on the agenda is the committee report. Um, who we start with? Dan?
I didn't write it up, but our ad hoc committee on parks and rec governance met this morning, so I can just give you an update on what's going on. Uh, we, we did have a consultant work with us for several meetings during, starting midsummer, I think, at, through September, our September meeting. At, at the end of that meeting, our committee decided, uh, that we thought we had enough, made enough progress with the facilitator, that we were going to see what we could, could do, accomplish without a facilitator. What we agreed to do this morning was to put together a progress report, uh, to present to the general forum. Uh, with a breakdown of, our preliminary breakdown of division of responsibilities between Parks Authority and, and Parks Agency, you know, the COG Parks Agency. There's, uh, we more or less clarified those issues among ourselves, even though there's still overlap. But we, we know for, if you're going to revise Articles of Agreement and the, uh, park, the incorporation document for the authority, uh, there needs to spell out a delineate, a delineation of the, you know, the role and responsibilities of each of those groups. So, uh, we currently have those documents, but they're very old. They're, I don't know, twenty-five years old or something like that. And, uh, there, there are things that need to be, uh, changed in them to reflect what, what we're currently doing. So just to let you know, to expect that will probably be presented at the, in the, next month, in the November general forum meeting.
Dan? Dan? Is that it?
That's it on that one. I, finance, we already had a pretty long discussion when we were talking about the CIP, so unless you have any, the board members have any questions, uh.
No questions, we're done at this time? All right. What, um, I would like to speak on, I know my report was Public Safety Committee, um, and my report was enclosed, but there are two issues I, I want to address. And one is the rating for our Center Region Code Administration. Um, they had high ratings. Uh, uh, number one is the highest for commercial, and number two, we would have gotten number one, but how the, uh, rate, it kind of dropped us down to number two, but our numbers were still high. So we. So we would like to give kudos to Walt Snyder from the co-director and his staff for their hard work. This is the second year we have gotten these high ratings. It helps with our fire department, it gives them credit, and it also gives us bonus credits as they're being rated. So, so kudos to Walt and his staff. We truly, truly, it's a, it's a great award for our whole center region. Second of all, I don't know whether you had an opportunity, but our fire department has a Alpha Fire Company, first, all women attack crew, who we would also like to give our kudos to. They have been getting great recommendations and accommodations for their hard work. Chief Sean Kaufman said to, he's very proud of them, but also there are 12 females in their department. There are 82 volunteers in the unit, and we also want to thank them for their commitment to keeping us safe. The second piece that we also was talking about, and I know Amy was able to attend the center region emergency alerting and notification. The bore water notification that went out wasn't the best. So Sean got together with our water department, our township managers, all the agencies that do the notifications, to talk on doing a centralized notification to all our residents. They're working to develop a clearinghouse alert system that will alert, that they can bring into one unit, that we all will be notified in case of an emergency. We're also trying to get our residents to register with Code Red, please. You know, it's, it's a step, it'll help save lives if you get that notification and get the notification of any emergency that's coming in. So please check your mobile phones and apps to go on Code Red and down, have it downloaded. And you also can go on the Center County website to download the Code Red notification. And that is part of my report.
Can Sophie push that out?
Yes.
Okay. You probably already wrote the handout.
You wrote that.
I'll write it down.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Yes.
Betsy?
Yes. So I have a handy handout. So it's, I'm going to just kind of read through it, and I'm, just because I don't want to miss anything, and I just want everybody to be alerted to the changes. I think you're going to get some responses from the public once they start to hear about it. So I mentioned at the general forum on Monday that the previous contract only had one bidder. So we are trying to avoid that, we're trying to expand the options. So we're asking, so here's some of the changes, and I'm just going to go down the dots on the paper. So contract is going to ask for, it's specifically going to ask for cart collection only. So none of this do your own thing with a bag. Three cart sizes, the pretty standard sizes, but people are going to get to choose and there'll be different rates on that. And another big change, the door-to-door service. So I believe that now, taking the option for door-to-door service for various reasons, they don't like doing that, I think they end up paying a little bit more for that, but it's a very, it really challenges the drivers to keep to a certain schedule. So right now, it is going to be required that they have to do at-door service for households eligible under the ADA guidelines, and the service is going to be free. But, so some people who have been used to having that service are not going to be able to have it unless they are ADA in need of that. We are not going to be doing yard waste right now. We're not supposed to be doing yard waste, but we do. So we're not going to be doing it. We are definitely specifying the clear, clean natural gas, the CNG trucks. That's what we do, or I should say, that's what our haulers do now, and there are apparently enough trucks out there that it shouldn't be that much of a, a challenge to get another waste hauler that has the CNG trucks. Vacancy credits apply for vacant dwellings in accordance with COG's vacancy policy. That's, I won't go into the details now, but if you know anybody with, not snowbirds, but football birds, who ever have a house, you may hear some comments about that. There are, we're going to have two one-year contract extensions, and those are going to be dependent both on the contractor meeting performance standards, and then we're also going to discuss some legal reviews. Contractor meeting, performance standards, and then also the contractor has the option to not renew. So it's kind of a two-way street. So options in the contract, and as it says, okay, I'm just going to read through these. The proposals may include a cost for each item, and COG may accept or reject any of the specific options or all options. The first option is a one-time-per-year Christmas tree collection. So right now, we do it, but we don't charge for it. Okay? Option two, the hauler is going to provide opportunities for each resident to schedule curbside collection of large bulk items twice each year. Oh! That means we're not going to have bulk collection. That's huge. People are very used to having two bulk collection days. The whole county is used to that, because when we have our bulk collection days, people from other areas drive through, and I think it's a good way, it's actually a convenient way to redistribute unwanted items. But I frankly, driving around today, or recently with the bulk items, I also think that it's sort of a lazy way for people to get rid of stuff that they probably should take themselves to, you know, Goodwill or Centrepiece or someplace else. So, and the reason for having it go from the bulk waste days to sort of by demand and therefore distributed across a wider swath of time is the logistical difficulties of the waste hauler to pick up everything in basically one week. That's a lot of person power, they sometimes have to get extra trucks, certain trucks, so. But it's going to be difficult for people, so I think we're going to maybe on the front of that. The, number three option, the hauler is to provide the opportunity for each residence to schedule a collection of bulk items twice a year. I'm not sure how that.
That's the same as option two.
Well, it is, but it's a little bit, the hauler is to provide the opportunity versus the hauler is to, wait, to schedule of large bulk items, oh, of bulk recyclable items. I knew there was a difference there. Okay, so that also might be an option. I'm not quite sure what bulk recyclable items are. I tried to think of some examples, and I just couldn't remember. And the fourth option is to provide all billing and any related customer service. I also mentioned at the general forum meeting the other night that Center County Refuge and Recycling Center, Ted Onafrack, and he's worked, he works very closely with Shelley Mato, who is our refuge, refuge and recycling director. So Ted Onafrack and his team stepped forward and said that they might be able to do the billing. The billing, when you ask a waste hauler to do the billing and they don't have that in their current staff directory, it's very hard for them to do that. And the billing was a, was a difficult situation for either Shelley or Ted to handle this past year, so. And there is actually been another option, is that we might delay action on all the options. So not only am I giving you this information, but I'm telling you that it's going to be in flux, and there's going to be a lot of information. We will certainly get the final information to you in time, but again, we might be in the forefront of selling this to our constituents. Yes, Elliot?
Before we change the bulk system, I think everyone in the Cali should have a chance to discuss it.
And, and that's why we're doing this. So I want to, yeah, so actually, maybe what we could do is enclose this for the meeting next time, and then have any of you get back to me, or how would we get the information? And I think the waste, I think our committee would actually go out and do a survey.
I was going to suggest that, do the survey. Because the contract's up by the end of next year.
Yes, we have a long time.
So we have time, so I would suggest, especially, the bulk waste thing is unique to this area, and it is, when I moved up here from Lancaster County, I was blown away by it. But it is a universally loved thing.
It is totally loved.
And I think that's something, I remember when they thought, they thought about getting rid of the at-the-door service, and that was another thing unique to Center County, but it was another thing that was really well-loved, which is why they ended up keeping it. So I think there should be a survey of the residents, because I think you're going to have such major pushback about that. The Christmas tree collection has always been problematic, because if you celebrate an Orthodox religion, your holiday falls way after the secular, the regular Christmas holiday, and then your tree isn't ready to go out until after the collection. So I remember that was, has always been an issue. So maybe include on the survey about Christmas tree collection as well, because I think people put it out, but then some people that celebrate the holiday differently are stuck with their tree and they don't know what to do with it. So if there's other options available.
Yeah, and we, within the committee, have discussed the various options of having a central drop spot or several central drop spots, and the hauler should come to get up. Okay. So these are all good, and, yeah, so my goal tonight is to get feedback here from us, but then the idea is with this feedback, then we use that to direct further. So going on to financial end of things, so adjustments that might occur monthly, and customers are going to have to watch their bill, that 100% of the 12-month consumer price increase, index increase on the refuse collection service cost, exclusive of disposal costs made prior to other adjustments. So 100% of the, oh, annual adjustments could be, could appear in monthly customer cost. Another monthly customer cost change could be fuel adjustments, and I don't know if we've had that in the past.
Yes, we have.
Okay. Tipping fee adjustments, we probably had that in the past, and then total refuse service cost, and that may not exceed a 5% increase in any one year. So finally, we're going to approve the administrative fee schedule. Fee paid to the COG by the refuse hauler to support. I've forgotten what that, the context of that.
That's the fee that supports Shelley's position.
That's right, and then that is within the monthly fee.
Contract, yep.
Gotcha, okay. So thank you for letting me read that list. This, it's very complex. We spent a lot of time on it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Under the yard waste and not including grass clippings, leaves, branches, and brush, have they banned that yet in Pennsylvania from landfills?
Ooh, good question.
Because I think you're going to get some pushback on that, because some of the municipalities, Benner and Harris would be the two that are in the contract, that don't have monthly collection like we have out here. So they don't have options, so a lot of residents put their grass clippings, their brush, and other things in their trash, so that might be an issue as well. I know Pennsylvania, for years, trash is kind of my thing, I apologize.
I've heard about that.
Yeah, I did the waste study in 2003, and I know they had talked about, because there was so much organic waste in the waste, that they were going to ban yard waste eventually, but I don't think they've ever done it, so.
Is that Harrison-Benner? We should look that up.
Harrison-Benner both don't have regular collection, because they're not big enough to be managed.
Yeah, right, okay. Okay. Thank you for that. So that's good feedback. Take that very good.
So Betsy, do you need anything from our board right now?
Yep. So if anybody has any gut reactions to this, or if in going home and thinking about bulk waste, for example, you know, you have some ideas on that, just get back to me.
Can we get back to you before?
Yeah, I guess I could go ahead and send out a reminder. I can just do that individually.
Yeah, or I can just scan this and send this out to everybody.
Okay.
And then people can just respond with their feedback.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a question on cart sizes. Who's going to pay for the carts?
The waste hauler pays for the carts.
Okay. I thought we had a fund balance in the refuge and recycling budget to pay for carts.
I.
Did Shelley mention that? Oh, that's a good finance committee meeting. Do you know?
I remember them saying that, but I think it was.
It's $200,000 or something like that.
For some, okay. An in-case fund balance, I believe, was the, was the, was it, they had it in case they would have to pay for the carts themselves.
I think you're right, but I think, if I remember correctly, the industry standard now is for the waste hauler to pay for those. And then, of course, we would end up paying for those, because it would be amortized over.
Amortized through the contract, yeah.
Yeah, the last time they looked at doing carts, which was the last contract, they had looked at the COG buying the carts, because you can actually get grant funding through the state that would pay for 90% of it, but then they were really worried about how they were going to distribute all of those carts, because they were like, we're going to have to put it on Memorial Field and have people come and pick up carts, and it's a mess. So that's why the hauler's a better option, because the hauler just drops it off for you.
Okay, so.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Larry?
Can I, can I just, real quick, I know we're running late, but very quickly, since I didn't write the notes for the September 27th SPPA meeting, I just want to tell you what's been going on. So, you know, we're still having the lawyers going back and forth, redlining and making changes to the agreements with Prospect 14. It's costing us a lot of money. After our meeting on September 27th, Peter Buck, Jacek Rattini, and Pam Adams, I believe it was Pam Adams.
I mean, did Randy Brown?
Oh, Randy Brown. It was Randy Brown, Peter Buck, and Jacek Rattini met with Prospect 14 to express our displeasure in the amount of time that it was taking, because Prospect 14's been slow in responding with their lawyers, and then our lawyers go over it, and then we send it back to them, and it sits on their desk for a while, et cetera, et cetera. So that has sped up the process, so we feel that the solar powered purchase agreement is moving along far enough that we have now forwarded the agreement for the retail services to Direct Energy, and now we're going through that legal review with Direct Energy. Should be much easier, I would hope, with Direct Energy, but we're going through that with the hope that we will have contracts probably in January for us to review, to give to our solicitor for review. For the legal fees, we continue to incur legal fees. We've pretty much got an agreement with the law firm to not exceed amount of additional legal fees, and we also pretty much got an agreement. And we also pretty much got an agreement, though it's not in writing, with Prospect 14, that if we meet certain milestones, they will reimburse us for some of these additional legal fees. So that's in the process. The final thing that I want to, I want to alert everybody to is that this is not going to, our current electric contract is up in December. Obviously, we're not going to have an SPPA by December, so Direct Energy is going to quote us electricity, but I am also going to go to our current broker to get quotes from other companies, and we're going to have to look at a 12- to 24-month contract, because by the time the solar is up online, it's going to be 2025 at least, before it's up online. So I just wanted to alert everybody that that's what's happening. We had another SPPA meeting this morning, of which I do have notes for, that I will be sending out tomorrow morning for Betsy's review, and then I can, and we will have that in our next meeting. Okay, thank you. Any questions on the SPPA?
Can we just use generators for two years?
Yeah, we could do that, or we could build our own windmills.
Yes!
But then I would have to wear wooden shoes to.
No.
I don't feel like doing that.
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no.
All right. All right. Next on the agenda, oh, I'm sorry, any other board members have any questions for Larry? Seeing none, next on the agenda is other business. All right. And before I go to the next item for, to adjourn, I would just like to say, just like the Patent Township Children's Safety Fair, it was also the Multicultural Unity Fair in which you had Supervisor Trevino, Supervisor McGruder, who made it his rounds to the safety fair, and myself were all participants at the fair, and would like to also thank CNET for their coverage, and.
Can I piggyback on your comment? CNET has a recording of highlights of that multicultural.
Just came out.
Fair in which Pam Robb's storytelling is about 20 minutes, 25 minutes long, something like that. She got the bulk of the attention. My, our drumming, Tuesday mine and the other two drummers we had, we, all we were, all they put us up for was a brief little 15 to 20 seconds background noise, well, sorry, drum is not noise, background music, we'll put it that way, while, while the different snapshots of the multicultural fair were shown at the very beginning of the program, to no fault of our camera operator, because she, she recorded the whole thing. But she just didn't have enough sway with the editor, the video editor, about how much of our play to include in the highlights. But, so Pam must have had, she must have given her some cookies or something to the editor, to make sure that she hit, she got the bulk of the attention. Anybody can go online to CNET website and find the multicultural fair video and, and watch our Pam, Pam Robb in action.
All I can say is mother knows best. So I would like to thank the Community Diversity Group also for their input and their organization of the multicultural fair, along with State College. So, without further ado, can I get a motion?
I have two, I have two quick thoughts, sorry. Yeah, I mean, just quickly, I mean, there's a lot of things happening in the world, and especially, I think the thing that has risen to the forefront of collective conscious is the terrorist attack that occurred in Israel, and the current violence, I guess, I'll just say broadly being perpetrated against people who don't deserve it. And so I would just encourage, I know there's a lot of hate also happening, and, you know, that hate is here local to impacting, you know, our communities, our Jewish, you know, residents, our Muslim residents, and so I'm just encouraging people to just show some compassion, be curious, you know, with neighbors, because, you know, people just have a lot that they're going through, and it's important for us to sort of like come together during these times, and not perpetuate the, the hate vitriol in humanity that we're, we're seeing play out across, across the world. So just try to do something good for, for each other. And then following that up with the chairs, I mean, if we're taking requests, you know, those leather chairs, like the Supreme Court justices.
They're not on our budget.
If the board could get those, and y'all can get the regular.
Yeah, for the $10,000, we'll get one of them.
Well, just for you. Just for you.
And to follow up on my colleague, in our mission here at Patent Township, we are a place for all. So without further ado, can I get a motion?
No.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to thank all of you, and good night.